Okay Karen, we are live and you may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, good evening Restonians and welcome to this special meeting of the Board of Directors, the Design Review Board, and the Covenants Committee, Thursday, August 26th. It is 6:00 PM. I've established quorum. Opening remarks, I will just say, for those who may not be aware, this is something that we have done in the past, the last time we did it, I believe, was June of, if I'm not mistaken, June of 2019. So we thought it would be a good thing to do again. So I will, I'm Karen Anton, President of RA. Other board members in attendance tonight are, this is in the order that I see you. I see Tim Dowling, at-large Director. I see Bob Patraine, Treasurer and at-large Director. I see John Mooney, Vice President and North Point Director. And I see Erin Webb, Secretary and Lake Anne Tolox Director. And I see Sarah Solvaras, at-large Director. And Jennifer is with us, she is South Lakes Director, Jennifer Justchuk. I think that's everybody. Category B apartment owners, Representative Mike Collins, let me know that he was unable to attend tonight. So as part of my opening remarks, I would like the Design Review Board members and the Covenants Committee members to introduce themselves. Cam, Cam, you can start out as our Director of Covenants, for those who may not know you.
Sure, I'm Cam Adams, I'm the Director of Covenants Administration here at Reston Association. And I believe there are several members of our DRB and covenants on the call today, so.
I'm Mike Bean Kino with the DRB.
Hi Mike, thank you. Maybe so, so yeah, I can just call on you as I see you, Charlie?
Yes, Charlie Hoffman, Chairperson these days of the Covenants Committee.
Okay, and Mark?
Hello, I'm Mark Ryan on the Covenants Committee. This is my second term and I represent Hunterswood.
Thank you. Brian?
Hi, I'm Brian Brown with the Covenants Committee.
Okay, covenants, David?
David Thomas, Covenants Committee as well, thank you.
Okay, and others, if you would, if you would put your videos on and so I can see you and call on you, if you're able to do that. Don't see any more videos on, let's see. Okay, there you are, LaShonda?
Hello, good evening, everyone, I am the Covenants, the Community Standards Manager and the DRB Secretary.
Thank you. Okay, who else do we have? I see Karen Noel is with us.
Design Review Board.
Okay. Who else is with us?
We have Dan Galindo from the DRB is also in attendance.
Okay. See that, and I also see Tom Mulcaren, our other at-large Board Director, is with us. Okay. Who am I missing?
Jim Lizowski with the DRB.
Thank you. Jim, and there's Michael?
Sorry guys, I was having Zoom difficulty, Michael Wood, DRB Chair.
Okay. Has anyone not introduced themselves yet?
Hi, everybody, Gretchen Aaron's with the Covenant Staff, Community Compliance Manager, I work with the Covenants Committee.
Hi Gretchen, you sure do. Okay. All right. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second? John, thank you, John. Without objection? The agenda is adopted. Okay. Do we have member comments?
I do have one member that signed up, Robin Duska.
Robin Duska, and I see Mr. Flashman raise his hand also. So, Robin, if you would state your name and address, please, and proceed with your member comment.
Thank you, this is Robin Duska, can you hear me all right?
We can, great.
My husband, Richard Huff, and I live at 11511 Running Cedar Road. And we just moved here from a Reston Townhouse cluster. With Doug Britt, I was the co-lead for the team that produced the 2020 Reston Association's Date of the Environment Report. And I co-authored the chapter on light pollution when RAZR was first issued in 2017. I have retained an interest in the issue and have had a recent experience with my former Cluster Board that prompts me to suggest that RA and its new lighting specialist work with the DRB and EAC to make it straightforward to replace outdoor lighting with fixtures that correspond to the relatively new 2020 Fairfax County standards on outdoor lighting, as well as our RAZR recommendations that were accepted by the Board of Directors. Before a recent move, my husband and I needed to replace our porch light. And I'm sure that all of you have now memorized the RAZR recommendations, but just in case not, two for the light pollution chapter are to modify DRB residential guidelines to mandate downward-facing lighting when fixtures are replaced. And a second one, to educate residents and business owners on the negative environmental effects of outdoor lighting. Now, I asked my Cluster Board if I could add a downward-facing light option to the cluster standards so that I could replace my light with one that was not environmentally problematic and was in line with the 2020 Fairfax standards. And I provided them with some options. Now, the Cluster Board simply wasn't able to act in time, so to satisfy the RA inspection, I wound up having to replace the light with one that does not conform to the Fairfax standards or the RAZR recommendation. Now, I strongly suspect that most Reston residents are not aware of the new 2020 Fairfax standards, or for that matter, of the RAZR recommendations. And so I think the situation would be best and most quickly addressed by three actions. First, if the DRB, aided by the new RA lighting specialist, developed a menu of lighting options from which clusters could select when modifying their standards. Two, if RA alerted Cluster Boards that cluster standards needed to be updated to conform with the Fairfax standards. And number three, if RA worked with the EAC to put out some lighting recommendation, lighted-related communication that addresses why the Fairfax standards now mandate fixtures that project light downwards. They could draw on some helpful material from the International Dark Sky Association that addresses the environmental issues and the link between lighting and safety. And I also think it's important to clarify for members what the lighting terms downward-facing and full cutoff mean, they're used in the standards and recommendations. They don't mean that a light bulb in a fixture faces downward, but that the light from a fixture comes from the bottom of it. And that way, it doesn't broadcast light upward and outward, which produces glare and is environmentally harmful. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Robin.
You're welcome.
That was very informative. Thank you. Mr. Flashman?
Good evening, my name is Erwin Flashman, I live at 1327 Buttermilk Lane. And I saw this evening that your agenda includes as Item H, DRB Recruitment Strategies. And I'd like to address that in part. I understand that the DRB has had some difficulty in recruiting people to serve continually as professionals, and there are six slots reserved for professionals pursuant to the deed of the Reston Association. And they should be either architects, landscape architects, and/or land planners. And in parentheses, they are referred, excuse me, referred to as design professionals. And there are six slots on the nine-member DRB Board for that resignation. That comes from Section Roman numeral 3.6 of the deed. And is the number and composition of the DRB Board. So in some, perhaps within the last year, there was some discussion about the possibility of employing people who were not fully architects. And I did some research on the matter. And in order to be able to use the word architect associated with your profession or landscape architect, you must have a degree in that. And you must also be a dues-paying member of the RA, of the association. And be a practicing architect. So if you have studied some courses in architecture, that doesn't cut it. And even if you are a retired architect and can carry the term, and I've forgotten what the term is following your name, but it is indicating that you have retired and are not practicing. You may not practice as an architect. And working on the DRB in that position, you are practicing as an architect or landscape architect. And so you must fully fulfill the requirements in order to do that. So I'm afraid that if you are going or contemplating changing the standards, you won't be able to do it unless you go ahead and amend the requirements for membership on the DRB in the deed and use words other than architect and landscape architect. So thoughts for you to ponder as you consider strategies. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I did write a memo on this and I submitted it to the Board some time ago, so it's as a matter of record, I believe.
Thank you, Erwin. Okay. Any other member comments?
I am not seeing any other hands.
Okay, then this is gonna be pretty much as far as our discussion leader goes tonight, it's gonna be pretty much the Bob Patraine Show. Bob was kind enough to send several topics for discussion and so that's where we're going tonight. So with that, before I do that, though, I did want, I was negligent in telling folks that also with us tonight is our Hank Lynch, our current CEO, and Larry Butler, our COO, who will become our Acting CEO on September 4th. Of course, Christina Easterly, our Board Committee's and legal liaison, and Sean Barami, who is our oh, Sean, your title escapes me, but he's our, he's our video maven. So I think I've covered everybody that's in attendance. If I, if I have overlooked anybody, I have, I apologize. But you have a chance to speak up right now if I did. Okay, all right, so with that, I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn the proceedings over to Bob Patraine to address the first discussion item, which is design guidelines, design standards, and cluster standards.
Let me say, Karen, that it is my intent tonight to have this be a discussion.
Sure.
Nobody wants, nobody wants to be lectured to in the evening, in any case.
Right, but I'm hoping you can start us off on that.
Yes, so I also don't intend to make any motions or take any actions from tonight's discussion. We're very early in consideration of the items and their mind. So and they come from my knowledge of the community at large, I've lived here 45-plus years. Robin, just got, welcome to the neighborhood, I live around the corner on Foxcroft Way. So glad to have a new neighbor joining and contribute. Secondly, my attendance, even though I've only been liaison to the DRB for a matter of months, I've been before, and my wife had been before, the DRB and a number of times as we've, as we've lived here and have had a number of homes. I've also worked on land use issues at the county level for the past six years. And lastly, and most importantly, I've had conversations with committee members and staff about issues that they feel are important. So with that, I'm going to share my screen and hopefully we can move on. Great. Okay. And there you go. So, does everybody see the introductory slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. So it's good to start out with. So I've broken the discussion into four areas. Design guidelines. Present some, some ideas or some observations that I've made about the current guidelines. They're certainly well-established, they've they've been around at least since 2003 and there've been a number of updates. I find them completely understandable. And I feel that they've been applied with flexibility and sound judgment over the years. In terms of discussion guideline, discussion guideline, discussion points, I have, you know, four leading questions, which I thought we could, we could, we could talk about. And the first are, are there some of the, some elements of the guidelines dated? As I stated, some date back to 2003. Are the members of the DRB satisfied with the condition of the, of the guidelines and their coverage? Would be my first question.
Okay, the floor is open.
There are, there are no wrong answers, by the way.
So if you'd like, I'd be happy to open it up with, as perspective from staff. There are most certainly design guidelines that are dated that need to be brought into what the current market has for product availability. There are instances where some guidelines may not be as consistent with the intent of the design guideline. Or when it was last updated, there were some changes that kind of were counterproductive to what we would expect to see in a standard or a design guideline in general. Window replacements being one of them for cluster associations. So there's definitely a need, in my opinion, to review some of the design guidelines that are dated.
For those of you on the, on the DRB Board right now, do you, do you find that the guidelines are comprehensive enough and flexible enough that you can, that you can do your jobs?
Yeah, so I'll jump in there, I mean, there, there definitely, there's always gonna be exceptions to the norm. But most generally speaking, they cover a lot of, of what is on a day-to-day basis of what's needed. I think some of the things that we've talked about doing recently is, I don't know if relinquishing is the correct word, but relinquishing more, more decision-making over to staff to be able to let them, on certain applications that are straightforward enough, be able to let them approve certain things that normally would have to go to a panel or a consultation or something. I think we're always hesitant to let that happen because sometimes we have a very competent staff and sometimes we're going through flux and there's new people who maybe aren't familiar with the precedent set from certain guidelines and it, and all of a sudden it can kind of create a slippery slope. Once we approve one, then all of a sudden, people, you know, start running in saying, oh, my neighbor got this approved, I would like to get it approved as well. You know, one example was, you know, we had an application about somebody wanting to put up a six-foot-high privacy fence on a half-acre property. And it's very difficult, you know, if you look at the guideline, most of the times, we really just want split rails to keep, you know, the open field of the forest. Well, in this neighborhood, there was already a lot of privacy fences approved because you could get it as an exception if you have some sort of noise, i.e. of road, or if there's, you know, some sort of visual distraction that we need to be screened, you know, we can, we can approve a privacy fence. So it's really tough to tell somebody, no, you can't have a privacy fence when the person across the street has one. But I think the guideline stood up in that, in that instance, and I think even Cam, you know, stepped in and basically said, hey, you know, if we, if we don't follow this guideline, then, you know, it's kind of opening a can of worms. So I think with, with Cam at the helm, I think there's, you know, we're in, we're in good, we're in good hands from a staff perspective currently. So I think he's, he's working on upgrading and adding updated stuff to the, to the, to the standards, which I think will be good. I know we just went over, for example, car charging stations. You know, he's been forefront of the effort on that to kind of push it. So we have a somewhat of a standard overall for RA, for clusters, single-family condos, everybody to kind of follow. And I think that's, that was a much-needed standard for something that's rapidly, rapidly coming. With a lot of people switching over to EVs, you know, it's good to have a standard and he's kind of ahead of the, ahead of the curve before everybody, you know, every other person has one. So I think, generally, I think they're pretty good. Are there tweaks that need to happen? Sure, anything needs to be tweaked over time, right? But overall, I think they're pretty good. And I think any new stuff that comes up, like an EV charger or something like that, you know, we're happy to add and get on. And Cam, what do we have to review every three years? We have to revise the guidelines? Or not revise, but five, is at least update them, right?
Correct.
So the old ones, I would assume, have passed the test of time, they still are applicable.
Yeah, most of them, I mean, there's some that, you know, maybe are a little outdated, but it's not that they're outdated, to some people, it's maybe a little confusing. Some of them just need kind of clarification necessarily. But I don't have a great example of one of that, but, but, but yeah.
Okay.
I've heard too, that as, as building materials change and new materials become available, is that not, and I'm thinking particularly roofing materials that would perhaps require updating of the design guidelines?
The design guidelines are actually pretty solid in terms of, that specific design guideline, Karen, it's very current in products for roofing. And actually, if you look across the country, Reston is one of the few associations that actually have, in the last, I think this guideline was updated in 2018 or 2015, incorporated glass tiles in their roofing design guideline, which is a new product that's available for solar collection. So that guideline's pretty substantial. But the problem, which adds another twist to things, usually you have the design guideline and then you have the cluster standard.
Yeah.
Those two things are what most members get caught up in the process on.
That's probably what I'm thinking of, Cam, because I've heard that from some people who, and I think, yeah, you're right. They, they were talking about their cluster standards.
I guess one of my observations is that the guidelines in general apply most directly to single-family residences. Even though the product selections apply across the board to all dwellings in Reston, all residential dwellings, they get applied most often to single-family residences. And then you run into the issue of cluster standards that we'll talk about in a few minutes that are more problematic. Where you, where you have to be consistent because you're all in a row. You're all attached to one another.
Right, so one of the things that I've kind of mentioned in past communications with the DRB and also with members at large, when we're doing show and tells with them, cluster leaders, is that really the design guidelines are just that, they're guidelines, they're not standards. And so I would like to see in the future at some point kind of a switch or a transition into establishing design standards that are more objective, less subjective in the review. Because right now, the design guidelines for Reston Association, they do have some parameters in terms of what members need to follow, and they're really good tools. And we've had a huge history of following those guidelines in a way that allows them to kind of mimic standards, but not really be standards. But what we've learned, or what I've learned at least, is that the design guidelines just establish review levels. So if you do X, this is the review level. If you do Y, it's the next review level. And then if you do Z, it's all encompassing, the full board needs to review it. There are very limited guidelines that establish what you can and cannot do, like prohibitively. So there should be more structure in standardizing what is and what is not allowed and what's permitted and what's not permitted, so that members get a more direct and explicit approach to what their modification is going to either be approved or denied based on them reading and observing what the design standard would say.
Sure.
Is there any reaction to the implementation of, of, of design standards? Given the fact that Reston is largely a very mature community? Or am I raiding a tempest in a teapot, if you will? Because standards, to me, are kind of parameters in which you must operate as opposed to some degree of flexibility that, at least, my impression of guidelines is they're, they're that, guidelines. As opposed to standards which, you know, set perhaps a ceiling or a floor and sides. And you have to stay with them, within that, that corral in order to be in compliance.
So I'm, I'm a urban planner by trade, and I've worked with a lot of design standards at the government level for a long time. Standards and guidelines. And I think the key would be, you know, the devil's in the details essentially. If there were certain key things that we wanted to set as standards that were just, we're not gonna ever allow them across the board, then it's appropriate to set a standard. If, if not, then setting guidelines where there is that little bit of leeway that the DRB can approve, the one-out-of-a-hundred kind of scenario that might make sense, then it could work. But it's, it's, that's why it's so hard to talk about these things all the time, because every set of guidelines and standards is always going to be different. And it's always going to be in how it's exactly written and how it's applied, and the decision-makers you have involved in it. But as a, as a general rule, I would say with, that I agree with the fact that, you know, there probably are certain things we do want to just say, nobody should be able to do. And if we can all agree on what those are, setting those as a standard would make sense.
Thank you. John, I saw your hand up.
I was going to say something, I think, rather similar to what Dan just said. And that is, I think what's needed is a wise balance, a sweet spot. Between more general principles or guidelines, as I understand Dan and Cam to use the term. And standards which are more precise, more easily divisible into yes or no. And, and, and I think the wisdom is hitting the sweet spot in balancing those two tools is my view.
Thank you, John. Anybody else have a comment on guidelines versus standards?
Yes, Karen, Charlie Hoffman. I think the standards are necessary in the clusters because of the likeness. And closeness of the neighborhood. But Reston has a lot of single family homes and to try to set any kind of standard for. My house and one up in, you know, North Point is twice as big is, is, you know, I agree, you can have some. No, you may not do standards, but to try to say, you know, every house has to have. That's just not going to work with all the single family homes. This is a very diverse community with a lot of different tastes.
And I think that's a really good point from Charlie, just to add on to it just for a second. Is that sometimes when we use, depending on the verbiage that's used, we can confuse our own members. So when you talk about design standards, you're not trying to associate design standards. To mimic what we do for cluster standards. What we're trying to do is create that threshold of here's the minimum, here's the maximum. But you still have the DRB that has the final decision on whether or not, for example, single family homes do X, Y, and Z. So there's still that kind of. Clear overview that the DRB has, but it makes it easier for the member to understand that if I submit something. I know probably 60% sure that my application may be approved based on me meeting these parameters. And I think that that's what members are looking for.
If there isn't anything else, let's move on to the.
Just one thing to tag on, but we're talking about standards versus guidelines is. And that's where one point of contention has started between the board and staff is there's certain. Clusters who haven't updated their standards in quite some time. And it leads to us sometimes to basically have to go against their standard, which legal does not like. And, and staff will then sometimes have to appeal our decision. And I know we had this discussion about this, you know, maybe, I forget when it was, maybe about a month ago. And that's where, that's what's tricky when you have a standard and you have somebody who wants to upgrade. Let's say they're siding, for example, and they want to go to a better, more, uh, a material, or at least they feel it's a better material. That's not a standard and our hands are tied. Well, staff's hands are tied that they have to deny it, whereas the board in the past, and when I've joined on. You know, we would basically kind of for, try to force the cluster's hand and say, we're going to approve this material. Because we think it's, it's approvable. You guys need to update your standard to accommodate that. And staff has, you know, obviously has, has Megan on board who's been able to reach out to a ton of clusters and start that process. But it, it just takes time to update cluster standards. And so that's where, if we, if we try to switch to a standard over all of Reston, it just, it's just not possible. It's just, there should be no way to really ever do that, maybe for select, select elements. Let's say we wanted to all have, you know, I don't know, the same, you know, pole lights or something. But even that, you know, sometimes it's, it's nice when you walk around and clusters have different pole lights. Different clusters, you know, some have more modern styles, some have more classics, some have more traditional. And, and it's a nice, it, it's a nice design aesthetic to complement the architecture of that specific cluster. So it's really hard for me to say that a standard is a good idea overall. It just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't, it would not make sense in my opinion.
Bob, I have. Okay, so I have a few comments and please, please remember that. My, my area of expertise is people and, and computers. So definitely not in this, in this genre. But from a layperson's perspective, I thought it might be helpful. Every time I've gone to change something on my house and I'm not in the cluster. So mostly just the, the general guidelines is what I would be using. Even though I think that I'm in compliance with those no application requirements. It's still, they're still vague enough that it doesn't make you feel totally comfortable as a homeowner to just go ahead and say. Yeah, I, I check the box. I meet all of these, these pieces and just move forward. Because your fear is always that, you know, when you go to sell your house or move, you know, that. That, that thing that you thought was okay, that you put in five years ago. And then, you know, go to sell your house will be audited and not be interpreted the same way. So just to give you just one example, for instance, if you look at like the roofing design guideline. The first two pieces there is like, you have to do the whole, your whole roof. That makes sense. That's a check the box. Or you're replacing your, the roofing material with similar to what you've already had. But then you kind of get into these gray areas with things like color choice. It says is compatible with other existing or proposed colors on the house. That's kind of, that's not exactly something you can. You know, check a box on, or the last one is, is within the same range of hue and intensity as roofs approved elsewhere in the immediate neighborhood. So I'm wondering if there's some type of middle ground where we can't write a standard for everything. And we don't want to because we want to make sure the DRB has some leeway in making decisions for individual. Situations, but maybe on the, that very entry level guideline. Maybe we could work on tightening the language up enough so that it is more. That a homeowner can look and say, okay, yes, I definitely meet these items. And therefore I feel comfortable not submitting an application. And I will tell you, in my case, I still email and, and say, this is exactly what I'm doing. Do I need to submit an application? And that's bothering staff. You know, just to kind of cover yourself as a homeowner to make sure it doesn't come back to you later. So that was my one. The second thing I had on design guidelines is I studied Z mod a lot when it was being approved by the county. And I would love to see us take a look at our design review guidelines from a Z mod perspective. To determine if there's anything in Z mod that, that we might want to tighten up our standards from. Now granted, I, I was looking at it from more of a Z mod perspective than the design guidelines. When I came across something in Z mod that I thought, okay, this might affect the association. I took some notes and wrote them down. So I, I have a list of possibilities. Of, of ones that we might want to consider looking at. My, my third comment is on the application form. If we could at all get a form in which we can fill out electronically and submit electronically. Or get our signatures done electronically or any combination of, of. Something better than what we have, which really is print out the form, write it up and submit it. Or create your own form out of the form that's out there. I think that would help everyone as part of the process. And I think that's all. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Just not to be critical at all, but she does this all the time.
I constantly turn RA forms into Philip.
He has an amazing. He spends an amazing amount of time looking at the, the various component pieces. And offers very, very good comments on a wide range of topics.
Thank you, Bob. That was, that was a very nice compliment. I, I like to research in my spare time. Lots of people like to read or be creative. I research.
At all hours of the day.
And, and try to connect pieces to other parts and pieces. So thank you. I appreciate that.
I think the, 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 if, if we're finished with the, the guidelines. I think that the second two. Leading questions that I've asked, asked here on this particular slide are ones which probably have already been answered. We had a member speak to the issue of. Sustainable and environmentally friendly elements to the, to the guidelines. The obvious one is, is lighting. I think we will face in the coming years, more and more. Applications for solar or alternative energy, energy generation. And that, I know recently we had a member that came, came and was, put out, was going to put. A couple of power walls on the sides of their, side of their home. So those are kinds of issues that we're going to be facing more and more as people try to become more energy efficient. And the, the second one on Z mod. The. Z mod, for those of you that are, that are not conversant with it, the county amended for the first time since 1978. The zoning ordinance. And it's gone from like 1600 pages to down to a mere 690 plus pages. And it includes such items as auxiliary dwelling units. Which are the ability for single family homes with two or more acres. To build a second, secondary structure on their home to provide. Additional, additional dwelling units like a, a mother-in-law suite. Although there aren't too many two acre lots in Reston. As Jennifer indicated there. No one has, in, in my, in my opinion, done a comprehensive job of reviewing. How the totality of the new zoning ordinance is going to get applied. And how it will work and, and whether. There will be conflicts between Reston as a coveted community versus what is available to. Property owners and the rest of Fairfax County. So I raised that as, as an issue which. We could spend hours talking about, about Z mod and the zoning ordinance. The last. Item that I have here, and these, these may seem kind of odd for. Design guidelines or cluster standards is the, the. Are the issues that I have here and probably the weirdest one is the fencing one. And I bring it up because as Mike pointed out, there, there seems to be. More applications. In, in the limited amount of time that I've been on the, as liaison to the DRB. For people to want to put up fences. Reston for so many years was a split rail fence, you know, a two rail, split rail fence, and that was it. That's what was allowed. Unless you had. A, an attractive nuisance like an in-ground swimming pool that required for safety reasons. A board on board, a higher fence. But it seems that the attitude of people towards. The openness of Reston is changing, at least in certain neighborhoods. And as Mike has indicated, there is. There seems to be a number of exceptions, exceptions almost on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis, which, which. Neighbors are fencing themselves in either. Without, without these attractive nuisances being, being in their, on their property. The other one that I, I think is, is particularly important because. Is, is the issue of stormwater management is, as climate has changed with the intensity of the rainfalls. The, the typical drainage on lots has changed. And. Again, in my short tenure with the DRB. These result in some contentious discussions about what people can do and what they want to do. And whether these kinds of, you know, kinds of issues should be addressed in the guidelines. Or we should have positions on as an association. Any thoughts on, on these? Yeah.
I, I have a question. It goes back to the, to the lighting issue, but before I ask the question. I just wanted to say that, that I too have appeared before the DRB, both as a, as an applicant. And as an affected party, and I have always been tremendously impressed with the work that the DRB does. The DRB members are very prepared when they walk into the room. And they are very knowledgeable and they work, they work very hard. And the quality of the discussion in a, in a DRB meeting is very high. So thank you for volunteering to serve in a, in a tough job. But my question relates specifically to the member comment that we received from, from Robin. With respect to downward facing lighting and either the DRB or perhaps Cam or the covenant staff could address it. Is there an ongoing initiative right now to develop a requirement that light fixtures be replaced with downward facing lighting? And is there an effort to encourage clusters to allow for downward facing lighting in their standards? Thank you.
Yep. Do you, can you take that?
Sure. So to directly answer the question, I don't believe that there is a campaign to do such a thing. And, and part of it is because you have predominantly what we work with are clusters. And so clusters have their cluster standards. And some clusters may not be candidates for downward facing light fixtures, at least not in the front. So you have that element where, of course, staff, as they're getting new applications or as we're doing show and tells and meet and greets. And helping clusters update their standards, we can of course encourage them to look at downward lighting. But ultimately, whatever comes before the DRB, especially as it relates to clusters, is the cluster's prerogative. So it just depends. And of course, the DRB can encourage them to look at alternatives. That may be more appropriate, but it, it's, it's never as easy as we think it is. So that hopefully answers your question.
It, it just seems a little anomalous that Fairfax County, if I understood the comment correctly, and I have not researched the county standards. But it seems like the county is out in front of Reston in terms of. Downward facing lighting and certainly with respect to the racer report recommendations prepared by the environmental advisory committee. I, I understand and fully respect the DRB's independence under our governing documents. But if there is, if there is a way to move Reston Association as a whole, more in the direction of the Fairfax County. Standard, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. And just to give you a little bit more insight, this is going to have more of an effect on site lighting within clusters. As the requirements, if they're, for example, Dominion poles, Dominion is no longer allowing open light fixtures. They have to be, or I'm sorry, closed light fixtures. So they have to be open or downward facing. So there's a lot of things going on at that level too, that then will dictate what clusters can do when it's time to replace their site lighting. Which we will of course encourage and use sample applications compiled of those that do do downward facing lighting on our cluster resource hub.
Yeah, also I'll jump in. I, I've, I've been a big proponent of lighting as well since I've joined the board. And I, I personally think one thing that would be great is for us to, you know, point people to dark sky. And to outdoor. So basically there's the International Dark Sky Association that has. Standards for down, downward facing lights, but they also make, they also have the, the fully shielded lights. So even for those more traditional houses or houses that more have, you know, kind of let's say just a lantern looking light. Instead of actually seeing the bulb, they've now moved the bulb up where it's shielded, which. instead of actually seeing the bulb, they've now moved the bulb up where it's shielded, which then meets the intent of the Dark Sky Initiative. And I really think Reston should be going towards that and should be pushing people to dark sky light fixtures. I'm actually dealing with a client right now that lives in Reston. And, you know, she was proposing, you know, some light fixtures that are fully open and the bulb is visible. And it's, you know, the Edison type bulb and people, you know, all want to look at those bulbs and, you know, but unfortunately, they they're not they're not dark sky certified. They're they're they pollute light, even if it is just the one little bulb. You know, it adds up over time. So I mean, I would I would be in full support of, you know, updating our lighting standard and and putting people to toward the Dark Sky Association as an example. Just because they have certified people who have looked at all of this and have done a ton of research already. We don't need to reinvent the wheel when, you know, there's already a whole association dedicated to keeping not only light pollution low, but keeping insects safe that are key to our food chain and and things like that. You know, there's there's more to lighting than just light pollution. So, you know, dark sky is a great program that would be, you know, awesome for me to say, let's put that into a guideline and say, let's people, you know, all new fixtures, you know, should meet dark sky standards.
If there's nothing else, go ahead.
Charlie, off me again. Some years back when I was on the board, we used to without proper authority, require people to use three thousand K or less bulbs because of the environment. Was that ever made into a standard in Reston? Because we we actually made shopping centers pull out their lights and replace them with the you know, yellow or bulbs. Again, as you come out at night, you find an awful lot of the super intense white lights. There doesn't seem to be any control over in in town. I don't know if you really know, but you might have run across.
We we the DRB panel that that I sat in on last was dealing with that specific issue. A cluster in question was requesting new lighting fixtures for the for the around the cluster. And the the panel made it very clear that they were pushing very hard to get three thousand K lights installed instead of, I believe it was sixty five hundred K that was originally proposed. So although I don't, I'm not aware of a specific requirement, I know that the panels and the board have strongly encouraged people to stay with the warmer lower Calvin Calvin rated bulbs. Is that a fair statement, Mike?
Yeah, and and I agree with that. And that's, you know, I think that's more of a learned trait of when you're on the board. It's it's something that we, you know, I know I was harped on it from when I joined the board. And then now I harp on new people that that's, you know, what we're always pushing is three thousand Kelvin. With with some, you know, misunderstanding, especially with that that specific panel, I was a part of it, you know, people take three thousand Kelvin and think, oh, my my light is not going to be bright because it has a color temperature of three thousand Kelvin. Well, unfortunately, that's not true. It light brightness is done with lumens. And so that's what I was trying to actually explain to this, you know, there was different, they had a whole cut sheet of what they were trying to propose. And they a lot of people are now having, you know, and it brings up all the time, safety issue in Reston because we have such little amount of light, little amount of street light, little amount of pathway lighting, et cetera, et cetera. You know, if you have a certain area that maybe needs a little bit more lighting, it doesn't mean you need to go to a a cooler colored light. It doesn't mean you need to go to five thousand Kelvin. You you can go three thousand Kelvin, but maybe you go to, you know, eight hundred lumen bulb versus a six hundred lumen bulb, or you go up to, you know, fifteen hundred lumen bulb, but still keep that three thousand Kelvin, you're going to meet it. Once again, our guidelines do not talk to any of this. So it would be nice to actually update lighting. And I, for some reason, I always thought lighting did have three thousand Kelvin in here somewhere. And Cam, tell me if I'm looking in the wrong spot, but none of them actually say three thousand Kelvin. Is that just something we we put in all the approvals as just a de facto because it's happened so many times?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah. So maybe that's something we put on our list. I I think lighting is definitely something we could. I I was I was on the light task force for for our for for DRB, which consisted of of not really doing anything because we never we I think we we did that right before COVID hit, and we just haven't had time to really dive into trying to do it. I know Reston, you know, we did a whole lighting study where they designated certain zones for certain lighting amounts, you know, where tennis courts were, you know, are allowed to have kind of brighter lighting. And then there's the neighborhood, and then it kind of works its way out depending on what type of zoning or, you know, uses in that area. So I definitely think our lighting standards could be more informative to 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 members, for sure.
Dare we invoke the standard? You know, I mean, that seems like a good instance of where a standard as opposed to a guideline might be something we could trot out and actually.
For the for the for the color, yeah, I mean, for the lighting, for the color lighting temperature and, you know, but but even then, it's not really a standard. I mean, if we just put in our in our guidelines, let's say, lights must be three thousand Kelvin or less. I mean, that all of a sudden, I mean, there are certain standards within guidelines, right? I don't think that's uncommon. Based on our current, a lot of our current guidelines have a lot of standards that are built into them. We say you you can't do this. You can't go more than this. You have to do this, right? But then there's still other things open for interpretation, right? The design of the light fixture, for instance, or, you know, the color of the light fixture. So I I see your point, Mike, but I I don't know. It's not necessarily a standard per se still, I don't think.
Just kind of setting the upper and lower bounds of where we'd like to see lighting, you know, land. I mean, the sixty five hundred that, you know, there's not going to be much in the way of an application where that's going to be in play. But no, I I hear you. I think it's certainly worthy of a judicial study, especially if it's not set in stone.
If if we could, let's let's move on.
Yes, we have a lot more to cover tonight.
We could talk standards all day.
Yeah, yeah, we we could.
I'm not going to spend too much time on cluster standards because it's been integrated into the discussion that we had on the design guidelines. But couple of observations that I've made. Staff has done a great job to collect this cluster standards. There is a a single spot that you can find all of the cluster standards. The standards themselves, I find, are about as diverse as the number of clusters. And the and next, in in many cases, they they're far too specific as to the particular products that have to be used to meet the standard. And the older, the further they the further the standard gets away from the present day, the more likely it is that you're not going to be able to replace the products like for like, they just aren't made any longer. Companies have gone out on business, gone out of business. And the last observation is as a result, applicants rely on staff in the DRB to arbitrate internal conflicts and inconsistencies. And maybe that's a the consultant in me stating as as much, but I think the the board has done an incredible job in terms of being patient and applying good common sense in making their decisions. And lastly, explaining in those instances when they have to decline an application, why it is happening. But I I think everybody will agree that a lot of work has to be done in this in this area because they're like everybody on on the committees and on the on the DR and on the Reston Board, we're all we're all volunteers. And as a result, it it takes a while to get the momentum going to get the standards done and get them put before the DRB so that they could be implemented. So in terms of leading questions, are there are there common elements or a common format that RA could encourage clusters to adopt? Here, I'm thinking of if if you set a a template, if you will, up and identified the elements that you expected to be in cluster standards, would that, number one, would would that be easier for the clusters to assemble and get and pass cluster by cluster? And then, secondly, would that help staff and the board to do their jobs when when applications came before them?
I'll take that one.
One person at a time, please. Who who?
I think Charlie was making a comment.
Okay.
No, I was just going to say, once again, we have clusters that are single family homes that are not like Hickory. And to, you know, to say, well, you can't put on solar panels in Hickory is probably quite legitimate, but you can't do that in a single family home. So to try to standardize the cluster standards is virtually impossible, I think.
Yeah, I would agree with Charlie. I think, just as you mentioned, Bob, with standards being as diverse as the number of clusters, trying to give them any type of template that would help facilitate them submitting an application to the DRB, while in theory sounds great, but not every situation is the same. Unfortunately, I wish there were clusters that look exactly the same. And we do have some that do, but our best tool and our best guidance is to have a resource that clusters can go to to see what a roofing standard application looks like and what a site lighting application looks like, so that they could at least see the bare bones of what's incorporated in that application and how that application got over the hump for approval for the DRB. And we do do that now with the Cluster Resource Hub. So that's how we've been creative in getting clusters to at least see start to finish what something looks like that they may be requesting.
Anybody else have a comment on this? Jennifer. Oh, I'm sorry, Bob. I don't know who.
It's Jennifer, I believe. Go ahead.
Brown has his hand raised, too. I don't know who was first, so.
Hey, I was just gonna say that that makes sense because we are so diverse. But I wonder if there's even just like a cheat sheet list of here, if you're going to update your standards, here's twenty different things or ten different things that you should consider when updating your standards. Things that maybe you all have seen other clusters when they update their standards kind of regularly bring to to you. And maybe this, you know, this lighting could be on the list. You you guys said you were talking, and I I heard you talk about the electric vehicles. Is there are there things that you guys are seeing trends of? Okay, we have to, we have to constantly kind of update these pieces that you could at least say, here's a bullet point list where you can start, maybe?
Brian?
Hey, thanks. Speaking as I'm on the Covenant screen, but I'm also a board member of a cluster that is one of the oldest clusters around. So we have a lot of, as you had mentioned, a lot of old items that are no longer available. And the whole process, and we're trying to update our standards, it's a very frustrating process. We have tried to change a lot of things, and there seems to be unnecessary pushback on some items that it just makes the people who are working on trying to update these get frustrated and want to just give up and not do it. So as a as as an example, one of our members put through a lot of effort in trying to change, to add the ability to to put in some newer sliding glass doors that were more efficient. They were, you know, they're much higher end than what currently is on our cluster. And these were denied because the lower border was like two inches too tall. And these are doors that you don't even really see from the parking lot or the back because their expenses or the doors are recessed. And it's just, that's just an example, but there are, it's just the whole process of updating the standards for clusters, I think, really should be revised a little bit to at least make it easier for us to to submit them because it's just to get it gets to the point where people want to give up and don't want to keep going back and fighting. Just our experience.
Yeah, I think talk talking about the process is good. I I just, if if we start getting into, you know, the particulars of of standards, we're we're going to definitely be here all night. So if we could, but but I think a discussion about the process of updating cluster standards is is something worth talking about if people have any thoughts on that.
I I think what Brian is saying is exactly accurate. The the DRB does a phenomenal job in reviewing applications and tries to remain as consistent as possible. But going back to what we were talking about earlier, which, you know, talking about design guidelines versus design standards and having that kind of max min level, what you end up having is one panel, second panel, third panel could be reviewing the same exact application and providing different decisions. And so that two inch gap may trick up the panel number one, but not the panel number two. And that's because of the way that the design guidelines are set up. They give that flexibility, rightfully so, to the DRB to decide. But then it causes that conflict in the end with other adjacent clusters wanting the same thing and then getting a a decision that doesn't reflect what has been approved in the past for other clusters. And then that tumbling effect of a member doesn't want to go through that experience. They're volunteers, too. So recognizing that and trying to find ways to improve that process is is really important to me. And I know it's important to my team. So thank you, Brian, for saying that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. If there aren't any other points that people want to make, I'm going to skip on or to keep us moving along so I can finish this up. I think we've addressed both the issues of of environmental sustainable and environmentally sound changes and then the kind of pending pending issues of of climate change and how they impact, they could impact both cluster standards and design guidelines. So shifting now to hierarchy of decisions, at one point, you know, I was thinking to myself of, you know, of, I think the process is very transparent, but let me ask for for members of the Covenants Committee as well as the DRB, does the current process work for you? Is it? Is it satisfactory? And then I'll pose the same question to staff. Is there is the process workable? Could there be changes that could be made that would make it more efficient and effective?
Well, I can speak for the Covenant. And I think with the staff that we currently have, it runs very smooth, much smoother than the past. And I've been doing it for seven years. So yes, you run into problems, but very few and an awful lot of issues have to be getting resolved without coming to the committee because our workload is not what maybe due to the COVID or to the COVID, but our workload is not what it used to be a couple of three years ago. So the process, I think, works quite well. And I think considering they they don't all, most people leave reasonably satisfied with the decisions when it's explained to them why they've been made.
Is the process working for DRB? Either one of the Michaels or anybody else on DRB?
Yeah, I mean, I'll jump in. I I believe it is. I I believe the only time that we have a lot of back and forth and it and maybe multiple meetings and people kind of get frustrated is when it's a redevelopment. But I think those require that. But I think those require that. One thing that I think is good that we do require a work session is what we call it, you know, with developers to do things. But the problem is our work sessions are still just, they're basically just more meetings. You know, the design process is very hands on and very iterative. There's lots of iterations that happen. And to me, it would be nice if we are the ultimate ones approving it, that our work sessions are actually a little bit more hands on with the developers where we're meeting them, we're going over different ideas. There's a lot of collaboration versus, at the end of the day, our work sessions right now are just other presentations. And it really drives, you know, something like Vantage Hill, I think could have been something so much better if we could have been involved. I mean, ultimately it got approved, but I think it could have ultimately been even better if we had been more hands on from the beginning in a process like that. Same with, you know, RTC North, I think we ran into a similar situation where we keep having all these work sessions, but nobody, you know, the projects will drag on so long that our board will shift. All of a sudden, we'll have four or five new members that have no, you know, have different whole new opinions. And now we're not up to date on what's going on and they haven't really progressed anything in, you know, four years. That one's a little bit of unique circumstance because they're, you know, afraid to spend any more money than they already had. But I think that's one process we could improve. I think with the homeowners, I think our process that we have is great. I do like the idea. I can't remember who brought it up, but I do agree digital application would be key. And I think getting digital signatures would be nice. The fact that we can't use DocuSign to send out signatures just blows my mind. It would be so much easier, especially in, you know, yes, I know all my neighbors, but we're all, I'm not always home. They're not always home. Sometimes you don't want to go talk to your neighbor. Sometimes you want to send them an email that just says, hey, acknowledge this application. That's all you're really doing. You're not approving it or not. It just, it avoids an uncomfortable situation that I think that's one of the big detractors. You know, I myself have been putting together an application for my house. And I told my wife, you got to go get signatures. And she's like, why do we have to go? No, I don't want to go get signatures. I don't want to go talk to my neighbors. And I'm like, well, that's, you want the deck? You got to go get the signatures because I'll prep everything else, right? Because that's the, even me, I don't want to go get the signatures because it's just an uncomfortable situation when it could easily be handled through notification of DocuSign. I know we allow certified mail as a form of notification, but let's, let's go digital and do DocuSign to me, or something similar, Adobe Sign or whatever you want to call it. I think that would be a great thing to institute and would make members very, very happy to be able to get applications in a lot more efficiently than we do now. So.
So I didn't want to bust into a pub, but we the DRB application is fillable and it's electronic and we do accept digital signatures. So hopefully that resolves a lot of the angst of some of the members who may not be aware of that. But we do have that capability and we have made that that form fillable.
Cam, is it as a result of how long it takes to get in the queue that I've seen a lot of, you know, handwritten applications that come, in fact, the vast majority of them tend to be handwritten. Is that, people are just unaware of the fillable forms?
I would say they're not as familiar with technology possibly, or they may prefer. I am I can tell you how old I am, but I would probably prefer to fill out an application handwriting it than I would typing it up and printing it. And I know that sounds crazy to some of you, but that's my preference. And I think that that's a lot of a member's preferences when it's dropped off. Majority of our applications are actually dropped off to the to the business office.
Do you, do applicants typically interact with with their representative or is it just a drop off period?
There is always some interaction, whether it happens before the application is submitted or after, it just depends. But I would say it's a fair half and half of members that reach out prior and gather and collect information and then more often than not, the advisor is accepting the application and trying to interpret what the member is requesting. And that usually results in a phone call or an email.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Sure, John.
Michael, I'd like to ask you a question because of some comments I heard several years ago. And it has, it's regarding what you pointed out concerning the work sessions with developers. And I remember hearing someone make a complaint, as I say, several years ago, that sometimes the work sessions blur too much. The distinction between collaboration and approval. So kind of finding, again, the sweet spot between helping a developer find a more appropriate design on the one hand, but then also keeping enough objective distance that you can be, if you will, the judge. Is that, is that attention? Or is what I heard, again, years ago, not not really applicable?
I think I see your point. I think it is. However, design itself is is up for interpretation. What looks nice or is appropriate for the area or massing size or whatever, it's all going to be up for interpretation. So even if, yeah, even if you collaborate together, you know, to stay objective through that process, to me, if I, of course, yeah, if I have a process in the design and I'm helping shape the design to what it becomes, is then my vote for approval objective? Well, no, because I helped with the design. But that, at the end of the day, is to me, a better process than will the developers are working with people who are up to date on our current guidelines and with our principles of Reston. It's almost like they're getting, they're getting free design guidance to kind of get to the, to the, to the passing, the passing grade, right? They're studying for the SAT with someone who prepared the SAT test, right? Or something to that extent. It doesn't mean that they necessarily are going to pass when they bring, you know, come to take the test, but they've at least, you know, worked with somebody who's, 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 who's up to date on the current, you know, standards and design aesthetics that we kind of want to have here in Reston. But can I say a fully objective? No. I don't think so, but I don't think when you're, when you're part of a work session like that, I think you, as soon as you're familiar with the project, I don't think you're objective anymore at that point. Even if you give feedback at a one work session, you say, I don't want you to do a bay window anymore. I want you to do a box window, let's say. They come back with a box window design. Well, that's what I asked for. I liked it. Now can I not be objective anymore? You know, I don't know. I had a really answer to that question. And it's tough in design, I would say, for sure.
Well, just like Mike said.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think objective is a hard thing to measure, but it seems sort of like a a concern that's in most cases without merit because we are trying to get them to do something. Our guidance is to try to get them closer into compliance with design guidelines. So like Mike said, maybe they do something we recommended and we like it, but generally, we like it because it complies with the design guidelines. So I don't really think it's attention per se. I have not seen, and I've only been on the board for a year and a half-ish now, but I've not seen an instance where someone has worked with an applicant and they're more likely to try to vote for the applicant because they worked with them. They're, they're doing that because they're trying to get them to work towards what the design guidelines say.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to raise on this point? If not, the second point is in those cases where there is a unanimous, there is unanimous consent about an application. And it is without any controversy. Put the deciding board, make decisions without a full hearing on the application. And this was an issue that was discussed at a recent DRB panel. Given that there are easily from 10 to 15 applications in each, each meeting, even even five to 10 minutes on each application plus the decision period, it does absorb an enormous amount of time. So is there, is there an appetite or the ability to go to a unanimous consent? So that you would be provided the information in advance of a panel? And you'd vote electronically in advance of a scheduled meeting? And if everybody agreed to pass it, the applicant could be informed. You would announce the outcome at the meeting and probably, you know, as a check periodically, you would do a post review of decisions to ensure consistency. Would that make sense? Would that be palatable to either of the committees? For the board and the DRB and the covenants committee?
Yeah, so we actually, we actually just recently instituted that a month and a half ago for panel meetings were essentially as a, as a panel, if we collectively agree via email before, let's say, we want to approve application D, F, and G. They all are straightforward enough and we don't want to bog down the panel meeting with it. We can all agree to approve it and then we vote just at the meeting. We let, we, the staff will notify the member that we've already all kind of agreed to approve and we haven't, I don't know if any panels actually taken advantage of that process camp. I don't, I don't believe so, but we did just approve it to kind of be helpful to let members know for straightforward applications that are required by panel review by the nature of our guidelines, that they can just, you know, they could receive approval before, unofficial approval beforehand, say, hey, your application is going to get voted on. But if there's ever any affected party or if there's ever any someone who who's registered as an affected party, they no longer can, or they will always be able to voice their concern. And that way, we wouldn't be able to all approve it ahead of the ahead of the game. I just saw a comment in the, in the chat about that. That, that application would not qualify for, for that sort of process. But, but yeah, so we have started to try to institute that. I don't think anyone's actually taken advantage of it yet, but we did institute it to be able to do it.
Yes, the DRB is actually going to get an email tomorrow from LaShonda. LaShonda Graham, the new DRB secretary, has done a phenomenal job in bringing that idea to the DRB. And there are some procedures and stipulations that preclude applications from being included in that unanimous consent, or it's not really unanimous consent, it's voting by affirmation. But that process is hopefully going to make those panels move a little bit faster. And just so everyone knows, that process is tentatively starting on the 7th of September, as there's no DRB meeting next Tuesday. So. But for covenants, I don't think that Tony would ever say yes to that. Resolution gives us the authority in the DRB. I don't think POA would allow us to have unanimous votes and behind the scenes.
John?
I'm certainly for anything that appropriately speeds up the docet for you guys and for us guys too. But it seems to me that our jobs is not simply to make a decision. Our job is also to show that we have done evaluation and deliberation that leads to the decision. And I'm wondering whether this, whatever we want to call it, unanimous consent or an electronic vote should not happen. Perhaps it already does have some responsible minimum documentation of evaluation and deliberation. That would seem important to me.
Yes, and it does. It is very similar and it kind of mimics the consent calendar that the board has. And the idea and the parameters that we set up to, to have this be functional requires that the DRB members of that panel, and this is only at a panel meeting, so just so everyone understands that this is not a full board, it's not available for full board.
Okay.
It gives them the opportunity to review the application well and enough in advance to decide to pull it out of consideration of that voting by affirmation at the meeting. So every DRB member is prepared anyway, as Bob and most of you have said in today's meeting. They come into the meeting prepared to make those decisions in conjunction with the suggested motions that have been provided by staff on every application. So there's a huge vetting process that the DRB members are undertaking and making those decisions before the meeting happens.
So Cam, is there at least a staff report documenting the evaluation? And a weighing of all factors that that is relied upon by the panels?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a recommendation by staff on each of the applications which which the panels can choose to accept or modify or reject for that.
Okay.
And you can tell by, if, as you as you sit through more and more panels, I will say, for my own part, I can say that just the type and specificity of the questions that are asked by DRB members is certainly indicative of somebody who understands what is being asked. You know, the applicant, what the applicant is asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think we've, we've gone through that and to keep, keep moving, the last point is one which Cam raised in a conversation that we had and not to put him on the spot, but I'm going to put him on the spot anyway, is he, he raised the issue that, yep, the appeal period may be too long. 15 days is too long. And wanted to get both the committee and DRB's reaction for that. Could it be shortened up in order to move the process along?
Is it 15 days for the covenants committee appeals as well? I thought it was 10.
It's 10 for covenants. You're right.
I think 10 for the covenants committee. You know, I'm all for giving members adequate time for them to be heard. And if DRBs is 15 days, I think covenants should be 15 days. They don't know about the appeal until at the earliest. Why should I, I'd be speculating there, but it seems to me that when a participant, when a property owner at our meetings is on, looks like they're going to be on the losing side, they, they, it doesn't seem like they're aware at that time that there's a, an appeal process in place. And I'm usually one of the first, you know, you know, certainly someone usually I will remind them of the appeal process and that's the first they hear of it. It may very well be in notices that the covenants, that the RA sends to the property owner. I just don't think they're thinking about, and even if that's the case, I don't think that the property owners are thinking about appeals when they walk into the, to the covenants committee meeting. My, my point is that, that, you know, I think the longer, I think the longer, the better for me, from my standpoint.
Anything else? Let's, let's move on. The last two points were on resolution eight, which is on the design review procedures. And, and this one is, we've already spoken about and it's been asked and answered. There are fillable forms. I'm a big proponent of entering data once. And allow for a collection of key data elements that could be, could build a database. This was not an intent, was not my intent to rewrite or materially amend the, the resolution. It was, so we dealt with that one.
If I could add something to that, instead of a fillable form, a good wish for myself and my team would be an online form. And I know that that has been something that was talked about with the new website, but and it may be still kind of a part of that process, but I think members would appreciate seeing some sort of I can go to reston.org and fill in all the fields and hit submit. I can go to Reston.org and fill in all the fields and hit submit and then. It submits something, maybe I get a copy, you get a copy, and then there's always a record of it. I think that that's always helpful too.
Absolutely. Seen it. And, and the last one is the affected party. Resolution and I was. I found it. As I said here, as the umbrella organization over covenants and the amended Reston Association is directly or indirectly. An affected party in virtually every change proposed. And the point I was trying to make here is. The current covenants are enforceable through January 1st of 2026. And even though that seems like forever and a day forward. Are there any changes? What I was trying to do is, is generate any thoughts that people had about. About changes that should be in the, in the amended deed that would impact covenants. Because this is going to take at least a couple of years, it did the last time. To get the amended deed amended. And even though 2026 seems far away, it's not. Time goes fast. And these, these kinds of issues take a lot of thought and preparation. So. I won't, I, I, I think it's unfair to, you know. To ask people to come up with this, but just to plant the seed in everyone's minds. The covenants are enforceable through January 1st of 2026. If there are any that. Members of the committee or members in general want to be changed. We have until then to get it done, or they will. We will be, we will living with, we will live with the consequences thereafter, so. With that, unless anybody has any other comments or questions or concerns. I'll pass the torch back to Karen.
I'm looking to see if anybody has something to say. Yes, Tim?
I, I wanted to ask Michael Wood whether. Having Reston Association as an affected party in every case. Has been a problem for the DRB. I, I did listen to your, I believe it was your June meeting and it sounded. First of all, like there was a. Failure to communicate the reasons behind that change. My understanding is that the change took place, I believe sometime in January. And that even apart from that. That there may be difficulties. Faced by the board and having RA as an affected party in every case. So if you could speak to that, that would be helpful.
We had a discussion about it and I think what it boiled down to is RA has always been an affected party. They just never, it was never being voiced essentially and shown to us on. Applications. So basically what, what it's done for us is they've updated agendas to show. If our, our, there's basically RA obviously is an effective party on everything. There's a little mark that they put on the agenda that shows that RA is an effective party. And then there's now, if there ever actually is a member who's an affected party, there's a separate notation that we now know there's a. To me, I call that a true affected party or a member affected party. And, and there's, you know. I think we, we discussed it back and forth. It's probably too long for this here, but I, I think we're comfortable as a board to just leave it as is at, at the moment. And, and really the only cases from what it sounds like, the issue is with the clusters and what I mentioned earlier. Where if we approve something in a cluster that is strictly against their guidelines, you know. Staff and legal feel like they have the duty to appeal that decision. And, and make us maybe follow the cluster standard. But there are certain times where we feel like we don't want to follow the cluster standard if they are antiquated. So we're, sometimes we're approving things that are helping members. At the end of the day, we see we're approving, we're helping a member out. Legal necessarily doesn't see it that way. They, they see it as a, a form of. I don't know what the proper term is, but disobedience comes to mind. When we approve something that is against the standard. Because then it opens it up for interpretation of, of, well, is it a standard anymore if we're approving against it? And, and so that's where it's a little, I see where they're coming from. But there's certain times where there's a cluster that has guidelines from 1973. And, and a poor homeowner, you know, wants to do new windows and. The, the cluster is non-responsive and they can't do new windows because they don't need certain guidelines. Or a new roof or et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's, that, that would be the only thing that. I think it'll be fine for the, for the time being, so.
Thank you.
And Karen, if I could add on to, to the, the affected party situation, I've, I've brought this up multiple times in different venues. That, and let me start off by saying, I am not against the affected party policy. But I think that there does need to be some sort of clarification in the resolution. As it relates to. What the original intent or what the current intent is for the affected party process. Is it only for those that are required to sign the application, the DRB application? Is it for any member that feels as though they're an affected party to register as an affected party? There's a lot of questions that I think our members have, applicants have. Especially because affected parties can appeal decisions. Of the DRB, it, it kind of. Boggs down the process of. Trying to figure out who can register as an effective party, not accepting these blanket statements. But if you're not signing the application, how do you find out about the application if you consider yourself to be an effective party? Those questions are not answered in the resolution and so I think trying to pinpoint the intent. Future, current, past is really important into figuring out how the effective party process will work. And, and be better for the member, because that's what, you know, we're all here to do is make the members experience better. On both sides of the fence, of course. So just food for thought and I, I think our team is working on. Looking at suggestions that we would like to present to legal counsel before we present them to any other body, but I think that's really an important part of this process.
Thank you, Cam. Is there, is there, are there? One or two or however many. Issues that come up because of the problems with the resolution. With regard to effective parties, effective parties? I mean, is, is there, is there some consistency in the, the problems that arise from that?
Well, I think Charlie kind of hit it on the nose, which is. Members should be communicating with members before they even get into. Registering as an affected party and that's just an, an education thing and trying to just, and create and. Foster a neighbor to neighbor relationships, but. Yes, there's, there's lots of concerns. Some people, if you think about it. Could use the effective party policy to prevent someone from having a modification. Or at least, at the very least, delay them. Because all you need to do is prove misapplied guideline or new information and so. The DRB does a really good job in terms of deciphering out often. Who's using and abusing the process and who's not, but there are those valid, hmm, I didn't think about that the first time. That then prolongs the, the application process and so trying to figure out what parameters. Need to be set up to ensure that. Everyone has a fair shot in getting their application reviewed and equally. Allowing true registered effective parties and vocalizing their concerns. Is really helpful to, I think, all people who go through the DRB process because it really. It, it, in my opinion, what ends up happening is they don't go through the DRB process because. They don't want to deal with their neighbor or they don't want to deal with the situation and so they just do it anyway, which then, as Charlie knows, ends up in covenants. So, or legal, depending on what the situation actually is, so. It, it does affect a lot of our members and I think it's important to look at it.
Okay, David, Jennifer, David Thomas had raised his hand. I think then I'll, I'll take you. David?
Thank you. With regard to the issue that Cam is speaking on. My, my personal experience with that is that in turning in an application. I got, I did do exactly what he's talking about where you talk to your neighbors and you get the signatures together, that sort of thing. The, the problem that I have is I have renters around me. Where the properties are owned by somebody else. And turning that application in. Whoever's processing that application decided that I needed the, the signatures of those renter people. As opposed to the three nearest that were available to me. Well, as Cam said, when that process gets difficult, and it did because I had to now send out. A certified return seat receipt. Mail to somebody that you don't know is going to get it or ever respond. And you could potentially get greatly delayed. Or postponed indefinitely trying to track those down. In my case, I got lucky. They, I was able to track them down and they responded, but I, I think. Affected member issues. Should be. Managed in a way where you're able to get a reasonable response from who's ever near. And you're not being requested to go track down. Too many other people when they're not available. So that would just be my comment in that one type of scenario.
Thank you, David. Jennifer?
I totally understand where, where Cam is going or was coming from. And kind of wanted to add as food for thought, the complexity when we're talking about common properties. Or commercial properties that the, the DRB. Has domain over, you know, when you're looking at things like. Michael was talking about RTC North, you know, who's an effective party? Any, any RA resident? And there's really no. People that are directly. Around RTC North and so. Looking at it from a, a commercial property, you know, think the Sheridan or, you know. Lake Throw Pool, like it's an RA facility. Is it just people that, but are that property? Or is it within a certain square mile radius or feet radius? That's, that's where I think it gets tricky.
Anybody else have any comments on? Effective parties? Okay. Then I guess we're moving on to item H recruitment strategies. And I, I'm, I really just. Wanted to hear from. You know, some of you all, what, and, and I know there's always an ongoing effort trying to get people and Cam has shared that. That they've come close. So just thought we could brainstorm a little bit about what we can do to fill this board out. To help do that.
I'm going to take copious notes on this, so. Feel free.
Can you give us kind of just a brief summary of, because I don't want to repeat things that you, you probably, you probably have already done, but.
Sure, so this has been an ongoing effort. And. Things that we've done, clearly we have. I have done multiple RN News videos that are on YouTube asking for DRB. Participation if you're a design professional. I have reached out to the National AIA. Organization and they have provided a list of every architect that's registered in Virginia and then Northern Virginia. They actually sent. A listserv email to their. Local organization or local members in the Northern Virginia area. I've done that same thing for the landscape architecture. Organization, urban planning, kind of not the same kind of setup, but similar situation. I'm looking at all registered urban planners. Or at least some sort of faction of being registered because you're technically, a license is not required to be an urban planner. So coupled with those things and one of the important parts of the design professional requirement. Is kind of unique in that. The DRB member has to be a Class A member, which means they have to own a lot, which is kind of interesting, given the fact that. The people who appoint the DRB members. Some of them don't have to be Class A members. So it's a little interesting and I think that if that's something that the, that the board and the community wanted to look at. When the deed referendum comes up, that is most certainly something that should be looked at. And, and then also thinking about the, the setup, but those are the things that I have done. And I have found people who are qualified to be design professionals on the DRB. I've found six to be exact. And they have all politely declined. And for multitude of different reasons, I think COVID has been this kind of. You know, I'm not sure what's going on. I had one person who. Is interested, but they are in Canada and they've been in Canada since the start of COVID. And so trying to figure out who, what, when, where, how, and as I come up with. Finding these people because the, the largest net here is that they have to be RA Class A members. So we have had tenants that are qualified, but they don't own the home. We've had people who aren't on the deed technically and so. We are really at a loss other than naturally. I get a random email one day with an application and I'm like, oh, they're an architect where they live. That's typically how I find these people. And so it's, it's really complicated. It, it is not over until, you know, it's really over. But it has become very difficult to find and as a result, we are stretching our current DRB members very thin. I mean, the last. Meeting we had a significant amount of applications. And so trying to figure out, because as you all may not be aware. Technically, in order, we only have one panel that has three members and you're required to have a three-member panel, two design professionals and one layperson. So we have two panels that aren't meeting the requirement, which then requires us to have that applicant sign a waiver. Well, what if they don't want to sign a waiver? They have to be scheduled to the one panel meeting that has three members, so it's very complicated right now. And the DRB is doing, thank you, thank you, thank you, DRB members for all that you're doing. And even past DRB members who have volunteered. To meet the quorum requirements. Thank you, because I think the members really don't know the odds and ends of what's happening and it's very difficult. So those are the things that we've done to try and find. Members and of course, we've reached out to previous DRB members who can now at this point rejoin us. They're, they're not quite interested right now, but. We'll continue to. Have conversations and discussions, but that's what we're doing.
Do you, do you know, Cam, where that category A requirement came from, why it's there?
I don't, but maybe one of the more senior staff members on the call could answer that question.
That just doesn't make any sense to me, but why you would restrict like that, but. If there's anybody out there who, who knows. Two participants have raised their hand. Maybe we'll get an answer. I don't know. Trying to see who they are.
One is me, Michael. I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I raised my hand previously and I'm going out on a limb that Scott also doesn't know that question, answer, but. Do you know, do you know?
No, you, you read my, you read my mind, Mike. You, you raised your hand first, so you, you go ahead. I'm just segueing from some of Cam's information, sure.
Yeah, so the only thing I was going to ask Cam is from the six people that you said were qualified, does that include past members or does that, that does not include past members?
Does not include past members.
Yeah, I, I think two, two things that I've thought about with this. I think one thing that. Caused a little bit of, of the issue, to, to, to be blunt, is we have terminals. And we had Richard Newland, we had Neil Roseberry, we had architects who are still active architects, are still active residents of Reston. And we had, you know, there was a. And we had, you know, there was a term limit placed on DRB members for three terms. And that was imposed, I don't know what year exactly, that the board put it in. It's not DRB, it was, it was mandated by, 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 by the RA board. Um, and that caused those two to get, um, termed out, and they no longer want to rejoin the board. Um, you basically let them free, and now they are living their freedom life, you know? Richard's getting jobs out the wazoo in Reston, and is back, you know, presenting all the time. And, um, you know, he, he, you know, yes, they fill in every year and then, uh, which is great. Uh, but I, I do see that as an issue. I mean, I could see, you know, I've been on the board now, I think, four years. Um, you know, I could see in, in five years, I get termed out, and all of a sudden, you know, then Scott gets turned out, then James gets turned out, then Dan get, you know, everyone, you know, eventually we could all get termed out again, but then all of a sudden, we're in the same, now, obviously, people move into Reston, people move out of Reston, you know, you see it. Uh, but, um, I necessarily don't understand why we have term limits on the DRB. I, I think, um, I don't think it's, 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 we have to be reappointed every three years, anyway. So we have to go back through the process. So if the board wants to get rid of a member, um, that you guys, for some reason, the board doesn't, doesn't like, you know, they could easily, there's that method to be able to get rid of somebody. Um, if you feel somebody's too old and antiquated, and you want to get them off the board, you know, it's, it's definitely doable, right? Uh, so, so to me, to put the term limits in there, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, we're not running for president here, um, or, you know, running some sort of crazy public office where, uh, we, we can't keep serving. Um, so that would be one thing that I would recommend. Um, and then the other thing is, I, I do think, and a, a member brought it up in the beginning of the, of the meeting, you know, to me, an architect that has emeritus status, which is basically what he was referencing, if Karen Noel was a, was a registered architect for, I don't know how long Karen's on the call, I think it was maybe at least thirty-plus years. She's a lay member, though. She's a very, uh, she was a very competent, still is, architect. But however, she cannot legally call herself an architect anymore, because she doesn't have an active license. But by, by AIA standards, who is our association that kind of, not everyone has to be an AIA member. You can become emeritus status, which basically means you still can hold and, and attend continuing education, and you still have to go to continuing education credits, I believe. I could be corrected on that, but I'm pretty sure that's accurate. That, you know, to me, Karen should be considered a, um, an architect member, uh, but she's not. And she's taking a lay member spot, because she's interested in it, and she wants to be involved in the DRB process. Well, as soon, if we moved her over to the architect status, boom, all of a sudden, now she, you know, we open another lay member. Now we have eight members instead of, of seven. Um, so, I, I do think that would be a potential, uh, potential wee way that we could adjust. But, uh, I want to also hear what Scott has to say as well.
Oh, thanks, Mike. I think, uh, y- you and, and term limits, and credentialing, and, and professional practice bring up some really interesting points I didn't think of. And, uh, Cam, I think you also posed, uh, some questions as well I didn't think of, which is, uh, the, the, uh, type of residence, you know, type of, um, residents in Reston, and who, and who cannot participate. I think, uh, so I, I tried, I went on my own, and I tried to recruit. And I, I work with, um, I work with, uh, a friend, for example, who lives in Reston, and I tried to get him to join. And, um, most people I've talked to, um, who have served or have not yet served, who I've tried to recruit, say a similar thing, is that the time commitment is considerable. You know, most volunteer efforts are time limited, sparing, and occasional. Uh, the DRB is a very unique type of volunteer position, in that it's time intensive, constant, and long-term. You know, you're serving, on average, probably two and a half full working weeks per year, you know? Hey, you know, and that, that adds up to, you know, about seven and a half, eight weeks of full work over the course of a three-year term. So, it's a pretty rigorous volunteer position. Um, I think there could be things, you know, there are other things, even in Reston, like people that are vice presidents or presidents of their clusters, get their fees waived within their clusters. I, I think there could be potential ideas of, you know, waiving RA dues, or reducing RA dues, or reducing RA dues based on your served or time served. It could be something even smaller, like waiving pool passes. Uh, I'm just trying to think as creative as possible, anything other than outright cutting a check to volunteers, you know? I'm trying to think of something that, that is, is a little bit more symbiotic, shall we say. Um, so, um, that's, uh, ma- maybe a slightly tangential angle to what Cam and Michael, but... I think you both two brought some, some really interesting perspectives.
And what's this person's name, Scott?
I'm not, I'm not gonna share that, but, uh, but, uh, no, he's, but yeah, it's a, uh, you, you've probably reached out to him, uh, but, yeah.
It's, it's outside the lane of the architect title that we've been tossing around. I'm a licensed professional in the Commonwealth. Uh, I'm a civil engineer by trade. Um, I also occupy a lay member seat. Um, is there any consideration for opening up that designation? I mean, I am a licensed professional, I have continuing education credits, uh, in a related field, admittedly. Civil engineering is not architecture, landscape architecture, planning, et cetera. But figured it was at least pointing out that I'm also occupying one of those spots.
I don't want to offend any engineers in the room.
What? I, I, I get it.
I love engineers, but they are, I, you know, it's a design review board. So I think the design, you know, engineers don't necessarily, there are some great, you know, Santiago Calatrava comes to mind, a great engineer who's kind of seen as an architect because of the designs he's come up with. But, you know, at the end of the day, he's an engineer, not an architect. Um, I, I see where you're coming from, but then, then all of a sudden, a licensed electrical engineer, a licensed mechanical engineer, then all of a sudden, you know, who, who do you stop at, right, um, from an engineer standpoint? Then all of a sudden, now we have software engineers, which I'm sure they have lots of accreditations and stuff, and then, you know, it, so I don't want to, you know, eh, eh, they, I, I think engineer is maybe too broad of a, of a, of a topic. I appreciate your dedication to, to the DRB, you know, and your interest, of course.
Um, but, uh, eh, opening up engineers, I don't think would be a, a, a solution. Fair. No offense taken, Michael.
Cam, what, what are your thoughts on that, as far as, as, do you, do you feel that the guidelines should be looked at for possible amendment, or we just press on looking for people?
This is a really good question. Um, and again, I, I have worked for a, a few community associations, and Reston sets itself apart in this arena. Um, and I believe that, you know, because Reston is so large, and there are so many different facets to what Reston has protective covenants over, there clearly needs to be some sort of established, um, design professional requirement. Um, but I think finding a creative way in finding out what we can do to address, um, quorum shortcomings, um, for example, maybe we could do it that way, or maybe we can abolish the term limits. Because Michael's right, the board has the authority to say, we don't want you this time around. Um, I don't think the board would do that, but that's a whole nother conversation. Um, but I, I, I do believe that there should be some kind of requirements. What that looks like, I'm not entirely sure, but one of the things that I know for a fact should be changed, um, are the panel requirements for two design professionals.
And how many, how many, in you, in your search, how many people have you had to reject because they were not category A members?
Um, let's see here. Two.
No?
Yeah, two. Um, and, and that doesn't even include the one who, um, I think she wanted to be on PrAC. So, um, you know...
Right, that was the one who's, whose name wasn't on the deed yet, is that?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Licensed architect who's married, and the husband owns the house, but can't be on the DRB.
Right.
So it's, it's those technicalities that get us caught up in not really being able to budge. And so, giving us some flexibility would be really helpful.
He was working to get that changed, though, so don't lose track of her.
I will not. Also, pulling from past members who may not be design professionals, but layperson filling in, it would be great. So, um, I think Charlie had a, a comment, because Charlie has some really good insight into this topic.
No, I really don't, but I, I do think the stigma that you have to be Class A, a lot of people rent, doesn't mean they're gonna move in two years or three years, they rent for thirty years. To, because somebody, they need to be a resident to say they're a property owner in, in, and how many rental units do we have in Reston? I, I think that really needs to seriously look at, if that's kind of a silly requirement these days.
I agree. I agree. I don't know, I, I don't understand the logic behind that. Okay, any more discussion on this?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, just a quick question, is the necessity to treat a retired architect as a, as filling a lay position, is that based on a formal opinion by the general counsel? Okay, thank you.
It's unfortunate, too. Okay, any more discussion on, on recruitment? Okay. I actually, um, next item is new business. I have just a very brief thing, I think our general counsel is still on. And this is just to point out a discrepancy in our resolutions about, um, the attendance requirement for board liaisons. Our, our, our committee's resolution one says, uh, duh, 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 each board liaison is required to attend a meeting of his or respective group, parent, DRB, covenants committee, and/or advisory committee, at least once per quarter. And the, um, design review and covenants administration resolution says, attend at least one meeting a month. So we have, we have a discrepancy there that we need to fix.
Understood.
Any other new business?
I don't know if it's new business or not.
To any topic pertaining to DRB and covenants that we haven't covered yet, so...
No, just a thank you that I wanted to extend.
Absolutely, Cam.
So I just wanted to say thank you to all the people on this call, especially the covenants committee and the DRB, um, the groups that we work with the most in the covenants department. I, I think it's often a thankless job, and I do mean thankless. And so, um, I just wanted to extend that from myself and my team, and I'm sure everyone else on the call. Thank you for all that you do. It, it really makes a difference in the community in doing covenants enforcement and compliance. For a long time, um, you all set the bar for how things go, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Cam, and I'll, I'll certainly second that. Um, it's not easy. I've, I've, I've been on covenants committee, and I've watched enough DRB meetings to know what a, what a tough job it is, and what an important job it is, so thank you, thank you for all you do. Okay. And, and Cam, and your staff, thank you for the fabulous work, and, and, uh, you know, I think we're moving in really good directions here, and, and I'm so happy to have you at the helm.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So, just curious, tagging off that final discussion item, like, let's say, we wanted to enact removing term limits, and instituting emeritus status for if you're a part of AIA, and, and maintain your continuing education credits. How do we go about doing that? Um, ju- just, just theory, I know that, I think the, the RA board would have to amend something. I don't know what the proper term is, but is there, is there a way that we could, you know, not, you know, is there a way we can have action out of some of these ideas, or do we need, is there a lot more discussion that's required to, to do that?
That's a really good question, Michael. I'm glad you asked it. The, the term limit issue did come before the board, a, it's a couple of years ago, is it now? Tony, I don't remember. And it was, it was, it was a fairly close decision, as I recall. Um, it was a really, it was a vigorous debate, but, but, um, Tony, can you address that, what the process would be to, uh, bring that again before the board? And, 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 for example, the emeritus issue with, um, professional versus lay?
Well, the, the easy one is term limits. You would just, if the DRB wants to take it up at their meeting, discuss it, and decide that they want to address the current resolution, it'd be like any other resolution before the board, someone from the DRB, you know, the DRB would act via a motion. Um, it would go before BACH to get on a calendar, and the board would take it up at that point. To deal with the emeritus status, I think it's going to be part of the, the deed amendment.
That sounds, that sounds daunting. You didn't really explain that process, so I assume that that takes a little bit more time.
Well, we're doing it, uh, as Bob alluded earlier, we're going to be getting ready for it fairly soon. Twenty twenty-two is right around the corner, twenty twenty-three is probably the latest you could start it. And it, it starts talking about, and I've, I've asked SLT to start putting together some things that they see, and our, our board and our committees, obviously. If we're gonna do it, do it once. It's a fairly labor-intensive, um, process. So, so we're gonna amend the deed, do it all at once, don't ever do it piecemeal. And that would, you know, one of the conversations would be, it's actually in my notes, um, we gotta do something with the professional credentials. Do we expand them? Do we add tenants? Um, and, uh, you know, I, I'm not familiar with how it was done before, but I'm sure there's gonna be working groups put together on this issue. And so, once that's done, you know, I go through, amend the, the documents. Um, you know, we have to send it out, I believe. Don't quote me, I believe the statute requires that we send it out to, uh, mortgageors. Um, and ju- you know, that's, that's a formality. Um, I think we have two public hearings. And then it's done by a, a referendum. And then it's done by referendum.
Piece of cake.
Tony, does that require, uh, a simple majority of the voters, or a majority of all members? Which is much more daunting of a task.
I'll have to look it up and get back to you, Bob.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Questions, discussion? Okay, then it looks like I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for attending. I'm, I'm thrilled that this was such a well-attended session.
No move?
Second.
Without objection?
Thank you, everybody.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Awesome.
Thank you, DRB and covenants folks, for your service.
Yes.
I think this is the only time that the meeting has ended at eight ten per the agenda.
Oh, my gosh.
It was planned.
Have a good night.
That's a...
It was planned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Hey, guys.